Go ahead.
Jay, you'll be first up. Just a minute. Yeah, just a minute. I'll tell you when. He's ready. Good. He's pretty excited. Okay, you're rolling. There we go.
of Commissioners, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Jay Troll. He is a Boy Scout from Troop 61, working on his Communication Merit Badge, to come to the front and lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Troll. And good luck with your Scouts. And I will give the invocation, if you'll join me in prayer. Thank you for this time of thanksgiving and appreciation for all we've been given. For the beautiful mountains, streams, fields, natural beauty, we give thanks. For the food and drink we have such easy access to and were likely abused during this particular holiday, we give thanks. For our bodies to enjoy, minds to think, hearts to love, hands to serve, we give thanks. For the brave and courageous men and women of our military, law enforcement, emergency service, fire and rescue, we give thanks. Each one of us has unique gifts. Help us to understand and appreciate our specific and individual talents and abilities. Help us to stop and reflect on this holiday season and evaluate and appreciate all those who've come before us and left us with a safe, secure, firm, and stable community that we live in. Bring each one of us home safely if we travel. And thank you for this wonderful time to enjoy our families, friends, and each other. Amen.
Amen.
In accordance with our Code of Ethics, it is the duty of every Commissioner to avoid both actual and potential conflicts of interest. Does any Commissioner know of any known or potential conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with regard to any matter coming before us tonight? If not, we will proceed to public comment. The time limit for any comment is three minutes. If your time expires, you may leave any questions, along with your name, address, phone number, or email with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on matters during public comment. This is your time to talk to us. Comments should be limited to subjects that are within the jurisdiction of the Commission or pertain to matters upon which we may act. Any individual speaking during public comment shall address the entire Commission. Any polling of Commissioners is inappropriate. Persons addressing the Board are expected to observe the decorum of the Board and to be respectful of everyone in the room. Any person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts the session will be asked to leave the meeting. And the Board reserves the right to deny public address on any subject previously presented to the Board. Do we have any public comment tonight? Yes, ma'am, front row. Mr. Rice, you'll be second. You'll give us your name and where you're from.
My name is Mary.
You'll go up here.
I need to bring my hand along with me. Good evening. My name is Mary Pulis, and I'm a resident of the Forest subdivision located in North Asheville, just off of Beaver Dam Road. We have a home. First of all, we are in the subdivision that had the mudslide, where the home slid down the mountain partially. The home, as of today, has been taken down, and it has been hauled away. There's some remnants left of the home, but the foundation still remains. We... Can you point? We are very thankful that the county has come to demo the building. But we have a greater fear, and that is that we have a lot of loose dirt and fill. And it's not something I can just tell you about. It's something you really have to see. So I wanted to share these pictures that we have taken. And after just about every rainstorm... Thank you. Every rainstorm, we have a lot of dirt and a lot of debris that falls on the road. We thus far have not been able to take the dirt and debris away because we were afraid the lot was not stabilized, and we did not want to create a greater mudslide or a greater problem than what we already have. As of today, when they left, this is what the site looked like. So it's about a wall that stands about 40 to 50 feet high of now loose debris. And our concern, of course, is that for the next rainstorm or any significant rain, since my home is directly below this site, that it is going to be swept away. In fact, right now in that home, we do not allow anyone to live there. I will not allow my family to be there because we are frightened. We did everything right. We have our little home. We built a retaining wall. We used the best contractor, Ken Wells. We used Rod Hudgens as our engineer, and we used Bernie Kessel as our geotechnical engineer. And we did everything right. And if everyone had done that, I guess we wouldn't be in this situation today. But that nevertheless remains a problem. So I just wanted to let you know that we were told at our last meeting that the county will not be hauling out any more dirt or debris, and that would be my request.
All right. Any other public... I think Mr. Rice was next, and then I'll recognize you, ma'am. Mr. Rice, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Gary Rice from Canada. Got representation up there from Canada, I see. Got four points. Alida Home. I think it's a great program, mission service, done a lot of good, and is doing a lot of good today. We appreciate Mark and his leadership there. The next thing is Comprehensive Annual Financial Report you're going to hear about today on the web. When I pulled it up and downloaded it, it's all crooked, numbers chopped off, and I couldn't make heads or tails out of the document, so I can't comment on that today. The next thing, Mr. Chairman, I'd like for the new attorney to look into the matter on the videoing, so I can get moved up front where I can get a better face on you. You look a little bad in the back back there. Need to get you looking better. And the third thing. We hear this ethics thing come up at every meeting. Do you have a conflict or an ethic problem? No. Well, I'd like for Mr. Chairman, you and the Board decide how and make it public how that there's not a conflict of interest for our newer attorney to be representing a board, that he represented one of the Commissioners in a runoff. And if I'm wrong, correct me. And how her vote put him on the board as the attorney. If it hadn't been for that, he wouldn't have been on the board. So I would like for that point to be clarified some way or another because if you're going to hold us accountable as individuals in the community and taxpayers and read that big, long statement about how bad we are, I think we need to, as individual members, be held accountable as well. So I would like to have that looked into. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Yes, ma'am, front row.
My name is Sharon Campbell, and I am also one of the Black Oak neighbors. We live at 142 Black Oak, which is across the street from the lot in question where we have had the landslide. Our home is not in danger, but I really appreciate the feeling of everybody living on the downward slope. That lot is not stable. We have to drive over that portion of the road, and now whenever it rains, we're getting a considerable amount of wash, which a lot of it is clay and is quite slippery. We really appreciate what the county has done to demolish the home, but I wish we could go one step further and stabilize the lot. Because if we have a situation where we have another week to two weeks of rain, it's going to be down. Unfortunately, the home, when it was built, I don't think that they prepared the driveway properly, and there's a lot of fill in there that with that two weeks of rain just filtered out and washed down and sucked everything with it. If you saw the pictures of that when it first happened, it looked like it was hit by an earthquake. So any consideration that you could give us to stabilize that, we would really appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Elise McLean. I have a home at 150 Black Oak and an additional lot. And I won't use my whole three minutes, but I think if you look at the map at where the house was just demolished, and you do a straight line down, you'll see that the way this is set up, if this mud starts going again, it's going to go over that crevice down into what we call the Section 2, which is one level below us. There are other houses, other than the Pulis' home, that are lined up there as well. For a while, before the home was demolished, you still had some trees, albeit after the slide, they were at 45-degree angles. But there was still some grass. There was still some landscaping elements that were holding a portion of the slide dirt in place. As of today, that's no longer the case. So it's a dangerous situation, not just for our last switchback people trying to maneuver that road, but for the people that are living below there as well. Your consideration on this is very much appreciated. We need, as residents in North Asheville, help from the county Commissioners on this. It's more than a nuisance abatement. It's a safety factor here. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. McLean. Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
My name is Chris Pulis, and I am the husband of Mary Pulis. And good evening, Commissioners. I also wanted to comment, you know, they say, "Tell them what you're going to tell them. Tell them what you told them. Tell them and tell them what you told them." So I'm going to go through this again. The only thing that I want to really point out here is that Bernie Kessel went... They coupled with us, and we had done an assessment of the land that was up there. Now, our HOA paid for part of it, and so did the county, so we could understand what the implications of the dangers of the land are. So what we're asking, basically, is that we follow what Bernie Kessel's assessment of that property is, and that this land is shored up to the point where... To the point that is recommended by both Bernies and what the county paid for and what we paid for, so we don't have this happen again. Because it's really important, because this is another disaster waiting to happen. We know that the way it is with all the loose dirt up there, and now it's just been upset again through all the traffic up there with the demolition of the home, that we're going to continue to see this land fall. And if you saw the pictures, half the trees are hanging down, and none of that has been addressed yet. So that needs to be taken down, so we don't have this land fall into the rest of the community. Because it's going to go down into the city property, and then we'll have a problem with the city and the county going after each other, trying to rectify the problem. So we just ask again is that somebody look into this, and that we shore up this property at 145. Okay? Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pulis. Any other public comment tonight? All righty. Is there a motion to follow the agenda as it's been published, including approving the consent agenda items? There's been a motion by Commissioner Frost, a second by Vice Chair Jones, to follow the amendments... Follow the agenda and approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then we will follow the agenda as published, 7-0. Like to recognize Mr. Mark Upright, the CEO of Alida Home, who will be telling us about the USDA Best Practice Award that they recently received. Mark, it's good to see you again. I think the last time we were looking around, you're nice enough to take me on a tour, and I enjoyed that. Thank you for having me out.
Well, thank you for coming.
Several other Commissioners have also been out.
Well, one of the reasons that we're here today, we wanted to tell you about an award that Alida just received. As you're aware, we started a new program called DEESTAD, Alida School of Trade Arts for young men and women who are aging out of the foster care system. And it started with culinary arts. And our goal was not only to be able to instruct them and prepare them for adulthood, but also improve our food services for over 500 children that eat, and staff that eat at Alida's campus every day. And so during that process and teaching them, we were able to purchase more locally grown produce, fruits and vegetables, and prepare them fresh inside our kitchens, instructing them and increasing the quality of our food services. So we were really pleased when the USDA awarded us the Best Practice Award for 2013. In just one year, Alida went to using 90% of all of its produce that was prepackaged, frozen, and canned. Now we use 90% that is purchased in our local community and prepared. So the kids are benefiting it, and the DEESTAD students are doing great in the program. And so I do want to thank the county Commissioners, and I also want to thank Wanda Green and Mandy Stone for all your support in helping us get the commercial kitchen up there. Program's doing good, and hopefully I'll be able to come back on a regular basis with more awards. Thank you.
Awesome. Great job. Good job. We're mighty proud of Alida Home, and that program's really top-notch.
Amazing.
All right. Next up, we have the Public Hearing on the Resoning Request by Francis Briggs and Gary Cord, R2 to EMP, and Debbie Trumpy is going to tell us about that.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Francis Briggs and Gary Corn have applied to rezone 499 Long Shoals Road, tax lot pin 9634888113, from R2 Residential to EMP Employment District. The property is 10.8 acres and is located on the south side of Long Shoals Road, across from the Clayton Road intersection. This property was formerly within Asheville's ETJ and was zoned residentially. The tract currently contains a stick-built and manufactured home. The surrounding area is characterized by property zoned EMP at the intersection of Clayton Road and Long Shoals Road, and property zoned R2, which allows a variety of residential uses, including multifamily. The Planning Department recommends approval of the request, as the proposed map amendment is consistent with the Buncombe County Land Use Plan. The land use constraint maps within the 2013 plan update show that the subject property is a reasonable proximity to a major transportation corridor, is outside high elevations, moderate and high-slope stability hazards, and flood hazard areas. The Planning Board held a public hearing on this application November 4. The applicant, Mr. Corn, indicated that EMP is a more appropriate zoning district, especially after the widening of Long Shoals Road. One person spoke during public comment and indicated that he is against further commercialization of the area. The Planning Board found that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the land use plan, that the property has frontage on a major road, and is adjacent to the EMP zoning district, and is therefore reasonable and in the public interest. The Planning Board recommends approval of the rezoning to EMP in a unanimous vote. I'll be happy to address any questions you have now.
Can you remind us what's included at EMP?
It is a wide variety of uses geared towards office and employment uses.
Any other questions for Ms. Trumpy? All right. If not, we'll have our public hearing. We'll start at 4:50. Any Members of the Public wish to be heard on this rezoning request? Yes, sir. Mr. Cord, come on up.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Commission, my name is Gary Corn. In 1948, my grandfather bought this property on Long Shoals Road. In 1952, on the day that Eisenhower was elected for the first term, my grandfather and my father built the home that we lived in. In 2007, the DOT condemned a portion of the property and took up to within 15 feet of the front door of the house. In 2009, my father passed away. As his last wish, he asked us to save his house from the road, which we have done. We have since moved the house to family property on Clayton Road. We did this in October of 2013. Realizing that the best use of the property is no longer for pasture land, we wish to zone our property to match adjoining properties. We ask that you follow the recommendations of the Planning Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cord. Any other Members of the Public wish to be heard on this rezoning request? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed at 5:52. Is there any discussion among the Commissioners?
Chairman, I move approval of this rezoning because it is consistent, reasonable, and in the public's best use.
Second.
Okay. It's been a motion by Vice Chair Jones, second by Commissioner Belcher. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And we've adopted the change. Thank you for being here, Mr. Cord. New business, we have Donna Clark to give us a report on the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and we have our... One of our favorite CPAs, Chuck Killian, here, I see. Chuck, come on down. Ms. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Members of the Board. It is an honor, for the 14th year, for me to stand here and present the audited financial statements. And I know what you're thinking. She could have gotten better at this after 14 years. It could have gotten easier, too, but it hasn't, so... But as usual, the report is positive. But the FY13 financial statements were outstanding this year. But I have to keep your attention. So I'll wait and give you that good news at the end of the presentation. By the time audits complete each year, that's historical data. You've heard it, you know it. We're five months into the FY14 budget, and we've started working on the FY15 budget. So my presentation is short. I'm going to focus on the bottom line. But please remember, at the end of the presentation, if you have any questions, I can answer those for you. I always like to begin with the differences that you're going to see between the statements from FY12 to FY13. We implemented two new GASPY statements. GASPY stands for Governmental Accounting Standards Board. They are those that set the standards for governmental accounting. And I know this is not the statement that you'll go to should you be reading the CAFR by the fire one night. But however, I do need to tell you about the changes. The statement of net assets now are the statements of... Is now the statement of the net position. And within that statement, the assets and the liabilities have been broken down into two categories. No changes in the bottom line, no changes in the numbers, just the terminology. GASPY's goal for many years now has been to make governmental financial statements more comparable to those of business enterprises, and this is just the next step in that process. The North Carolina Department of State Treasurer maintains county data for all 100 counties in North Carolina on their website, and it's called a fiscal analysis tool. And that's the source of the data that we're going to be using today. This ensures that we have uniform reporting and that we're comparing apples to apples. We're also using the general fund to compare, because all counties have a general operating fund, and most of what's in those funds are the same with each 100 counties. Like I said, I'm going straight to the bottom line. We added just over $75,000 to fund balance, bringing our fund balance percentage of expenditures to 19.8%, and that's compared to 19.7% in FY12. Our internal policy requires that we maintain at least 15%. Our available fund balance as a percentage of expenditures is lower than the benchmark group that's showing with the red line. For many years, we've hovered around 19% to 20% or about 2.5% of operating expenditures. Mecklenburgs had a reappraisal in FY11, and that's the cause of the abnormality in FY12. And I anticipate in FY13, that red line will come back down. But the 19% to 20% works for us. It serves to meet our cash flow requirements during the first six months of the year before tax revenues start coming in. But most importantly, this percentage allows us to appropriate fund balance in the budget. It allows us to maintain or to lower the tax rate. The amount appropriated in FY13 would have been 2.5 additional cents on the tax rate. This chart shows that we appropriate fund balance each year, but we always find a way to save it, or we have for the last 11 years. The Audit Committee did meet, and they approved this report. Just a reminder that the Audit Committee is appointed by you. It's made up of two CPAs, a government representative, a Commissioner, a banking representative, and a business representative. They provide additional oversight on your behalf, and they monitor financial reporting, internal controls, audit processes, compliance, and a code of conduct. So what was that good news that I promised you early on? We got an unqualified, a clean audit opinion. I wouldn't be standing here. I wouldn't have a job had we not gotten that. We added to fund balance. There were no findings, which means that there was no deficiencies or noncompliance in either the financial statements or in the schedule of federal and state assistance. There was no management letter. For the first time in my tenure here for 14 years, and I believe it's the first time in many, many years in this county, the management letter is typically a letter from the auditors that addresses areas that need improvement. And so there were none of those this year. And for the 34th consecutive year, we were awarded the Excellence in Financial Reporting from GFOA. As elected officials, I know you understand that many times, the only time you hear from people is when they have a problem or an issue, or there's something wrong. Well, today, I want to acknowledge that this report is a testament of things gone right. And it took a massive team effort, not just one person, not just one department. I am so very proud to work for this organization and to work with these amazing people, and I'd like to recognize some of them now. First of all, thank you. You set good policy, and then you allow us to go do our jobs. And that's all we could ask of you. ask of you. We have a dedicated team of county officials and department directors, and they should be commended for these positive operating results. This report is a result of many years of good management. I'm not sure that many of them are here today, but I do want to know that we are, that I thank each and every one of them. I want to thank all the employees of the county. They serve our citizens every day, and they serve them well. To the accounting staff out there in all the departments, a job well done. And a very special thank you goes to employees of the finance department. I have some of them here today, and as I say their name, I'm going to embarrass them. They have to come and stand with me so that, well, there's their picture.
I'm a bit strong.
So they can get out of that. But I would like to recognize them and have them stand. Diane Price. Jennifer Pike. Blair Chamberlain. Kelly Houston. And I'd like to give a special recognition to Tim Flora. He, this is his job. He is, these financial statements are his baby, and boy, did he come through this year. So let's give him a round of applause. The audit committee said I sounded like a proud mama, and yes, I am. I am. We'd like to thank Gould Killian CPA Group for not only their work during the audit, but their assistance during the year when we have questions or issues. They have representatives here today. You've already mentioned Chuck Killian, who is a partner with that firm. We have Tanya Marshall and Courtney Van Hook. And I will let you hear from Chuck Killian, and then he or I can field any of your questions.
Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, it's an honor to be here to talk to you about this audit. Donna's given you some of the highlights, and very frankly, the statements themselves are the county's statements. They always have been. I should point out one thing before we even start. I've been auditing governments about 38 years now, I think it is, and we have, even though the statements are always the property of the governmental unit, same thing with commercial entities as well, but they're statements. The auditors invariably prepare the statements, as you well know. This is the first audit in 38 years where the governmental unit has actually prepared the statements. We did not prepare these statements at all. So I'd like to recognize Tim, especially for putting that together for you. They're your statements, and Donna is fully prepared to answer any questions regarding the statements. I'm here to talk about reports. There are four reports in your CAFR. And actually, if you will turn to page 169, you'll see the results. I'll give you some page references as we go through these, but on item number one, summary of auditor's reports on the financial statements, the report on the financial statements is on actually pages 14 through 16. We will not go back to that, but just here's a quick summary. Were there any material weaknesses identified? No. Any significant deficiencies? None reported in noncompliance materials, financial statements, none. The report is, Donna mentioned term unqualified, they've changed their term unqualified to unmodified. I think my joke about qualifications got back to the board somewhere along the line, but those are unmodified reports, not unqualified reports these days, which means they're clean opinions, basically. And page 14 through 16 covers the statements as a whole. There are three other reports in the financial compliance section. This starts on page 163. The report on 163, 164 deals with the governmental auditing standards, commonly referred as Yellow Book. We have to do certain audit procedures in conformance with the Yellow Book itself, a separate report governing those statements. That's covered in 163, 164.
What's the title of that, the report? Is it the, because I'm thinking our little op-eds have different numerations, but the title is, is that the, in accordance with OMB circular A?
Be the one before that.
The one before that, okay. It's the Yellow Book.
Yeah, the Yellow Book. Now, they, the next report on A133 is the OMB report.
Okay.
That's again a separate audit report dealing with your compliance with various federal government grants, and the audit procedures need to be performed there. Again, there are no, nothing, no items to bring to your attention here, there are no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies noted, and no audit findings that are required to be reported in accordance with OMB, A133, rather. You have a listing there of the major federal programs that we tested in the current year. These programs do rotate from year to year, so we don't test the same programs every year generally. There are five major federal programs we tested in the past year. Report on the OMB report basis is 165, 166. And then the final report on pages 167, 168 is the report on compliance with state compliance requirements or major state programs. And that is covered on page 167, 168. Again, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. And the only major state program we tested this current year is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Program. However, it should be noted that some of your state programs also are considered, are tested as a part of the federal programs that overreach them as well, so that there's additional testing there. But bottom line, there are four reports. They're all clean reports, they're all very good reports. General comments about the audit itself. We expected some delays this year because of, it's the first time we've been through a situation where the unit itself actually prepared the statements. Did not happen. I'm sure Tim had some learning issues in terms of pulling reports together, but it'll be an even cleaner situation for him next year. The compliance, not compliance, but the cooperation with your, from your staff in terms of preparing what we needed in a timely fashion, have it ready for us to use, was there without exception. A very, very, a very efficient, clean audit from start to finish. Kudos to your staff.
Excellent.
Any questions?
Good job.
When does GASPY get done? I mean, or is it just an ongoing implementation of rules? I mean...
GASPY is an ongoing board, like the Financial Accounting Standards Board.
And they just come up with new stuff every year?
They make it up every year, as it goes on.
Because I was thinking it was born out of this, you know, situation, whenever it was, I can't remember historically, that happened about 10 years ago, or, you know what I'm talking about?
Especially before that.
Yep.
GASPY 34 was a big one, and that goes back about 10 years at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
It predates that, but by and large, they come up with new pronouncements, two or three a year, basically seems like. And some issues come up somewhere along the line, and they feel the need to issue a pronouncement addressing those specific issues or problems that seem to have arisen. Many times, there are questions arise from the financial community that has, have a problem with the way the financial reporting governments is handling.
I got you.
Which is unique, so.
So get ready for something next year, too.
It's an ever-changing situation.
Okay. So Mr. Killian, how unusual it is, I see, and I know how you auditors are, y'all like have to be very stoic, and you can't like show any like favoritism, which is where I'm going with all this, but I'm going to give you a headline. I mean, how rare is it to have an entity that does not have a management letter?
Not all that rare. I've had a few in the past, but not too often.
Because I...
They're usually very, very small comments. I mean, if they're major comments, they won't...
Yeah, it's not bad to have a management letter. I don't want anybody to feel bad that gets a management letter, because that's par for the course, but I'm, I, I think that's very exceptional to not have a management letter.
Your audit committee raised the question, one member of your audit committee raised the question, should we issue a report which is a non-report report? Now, we didn't really think that was necessary, but just to make sure you're aware of the fact that we didn't overlook it, we didn't forget about it.
Ah, yeah.
We did think very hard, is this something we need to bring up here, and went back through our work, and everything fell into place beautifully this year, so.
And you did, just like I expected you to do, in terms of Van Barry, but it's really amazing that they, that they had, didn't have a non, didn't have a management letter.
And in a unit this size, of this magnitude, and the number of people you have working for you, it would be extremely unusual, I think.
Yeah. We need you to give us a woo-hoo or something.
Not, not going to happen.
Not going to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's great.
Any other questions?
Well, I have an opportunity to sit on this board, and when they brought that to us, I thought it was great. They couldn't find anything wrong. We asked the staff to leave the room, and we still couldn't find anything wrong. So brought them back, but I appreciate Donna, I appreciate the staff, you've done a great job. I've been to two meetings, and I'm learning, you know, the math side's the side I like, Donna. Great job, staff. Thank you.
Make one of the comments, please.
I need to put a plug for your audit committee as well. Those guys, you've got a good cross-section of people who understand what the statements are all about, and even what auditing and accounting is all about, and they raise some serious good questions, and they're involved in the planning process as well. So you've got, again, you're miles ahead of most entities in terms of the support you've got there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Killian. Clark?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'd like to recognize your county manager. You can't go without saying that she puts this team together and lets us be creative and get things done, and so I could not go without recognizing her and thanking her today.
All right. Do we need to ratify the report, or is this just informational for us today?
Just information.
Well, thank you both.
Great job.
And thank you, staff. And thank Commissioner Frye for serving on the committee.
Yes, sir.
All right. Next, we have Debbie Trumpy is going to tell us about the Long Mountain Conservation Easement request for approval.
Judy, if you'd put the PowerPoint up, please. I'm presenting a great conservation project opportunity. This is a conservation easement on 121 acres on Long Mountain. The project had previously been approved in 2011, and circumstances arose where it was not able to proceed. The owner is now able to proceed with the easement, and we are requesting funding of $69,300 to fund this project. The easement, as I said, would protect 121 acres. It's on the summit of Long Mountain and would be held by the Carolina Mountain Land Conservancy. Long Mountain is located in Upper Hominy, and it is very near the Pisgah National Forest. The funding we're requesting is for a bargain purchase and to fund a portion of the transaction costs for the easement. The landowner is willing to donate 82% of the easement value, which is estimated at This property is in a conservation-focused area. That's areas that have been targeted for, as high priority areas for conservation, which your board adopted in 2005, and the Land Conservation Advisory Board has recommended funding for the easement. The property is highly visible from the Blue Ridge Parkway, the Mountains to the Sea Trail, and several public roads, including Pisgah Highway. The easement would protect three perennial streams which head up on this property with 50-foot buffers. The request is for $19,300 for a portion of transaction costs and $50,000 for a bargain purchase of the easement. An additional $25,000 has been applied for from Money in the Ground grant, which is through the Conservation Trust for North Carolina. The money in the ground prioritizes projects which substantially protect the view from the Pisgah, Blue Ridge Parkway. An additional $230,700 charitable gift by the landowner would be leveraged. This is an aerial photo of the property. The 121-acre tract is outlined in yellow. The dark blue lines are the three unnamed perennial streams that head up on the property. The light blue areas are the 50-foot stream buffer areas. No logging, mowing, or livestock grazing would be allowed in these areas, and that would improve both water quality and the year-round flow. Landowner currently does use the open area to graze cattle, and that would be allowed to be continued as long as fencing is installed to keep the cattle out of the, out of the stream buffer areas. And here's a location map of the area. That's Upper Hominy showing. The tract is in yellow. The Pisgah National Forest is the dark green, and then the pink ribbon running across is the Blue Ridge Parkway property. And this property is about 1,500 feet from Pisgah National Forest. Here's a couple photos that were taken from the Blue Ridge Parkway, one at mile post 407, just past Pisgah, Young Pisgah Tunnel, and the other at mile post 404, past Fork Mountain Tunnel. You can see the long, long summit ridge there is very visible. And just a few more pictures of the property here. There, the top shows a perched wetland. This wetland is in a cleft between two shoulders of the mountain, and this is quite uncommon. The bottom right shows a rare glade, which is a natural opening in the forest, and this has escaped logging and grazing. And there's a quite rare plant community that has adapted to unusual conditions there. Also, this property has been identified as a high-value hub for wildlife habitat and biodiversity, and is listed as a wildlife quarter in the Lincoln Lands and Communities. And I'd be happy to address any questions you have on this.
Let me back up. Basically, this is a voluntary action. The owner of the property is not being forced to do anything. This is something that they came to us about, and by putting up 63 or almost $70,000, we're actually leveraging 400% or $280,000 value of this development, of taking the development rights. The person can still farm, the individuals can still use the land, we are buying their development rights only. Is that right?
That is correct. It's absolutely voluntary, and there is a great amount of funds leveraged for this purchase, and this easement will stay on the property in perpetuity. It can be sold, it can be used, it's not open to public access, any, anything like that.
So Mr. Trolls up here, he'll be able to look and see the same view that we can see there. Is that right?
That's correct.
Mr. Gant, I don't have a, I don't have a question, but I just would like to make a comment. It's just a really exciting project, and so I just, you know, I know a lot of really special places have gotten preserved through the county's land conservation partnership, but of the different properties I'm familiar with, this seems like one of the really unique properties that will get protected. And so I just wanted to say, you know, express thanks to the, the different conservation organizations that were involved in it. It looks like the Carolina Mountain Lands Conservancy has been involved, great organization, our own Land Conservation Advisory Board, and also just to the, to the landowners who are, who are really giving away, you know, really just donating a tremendous value. I mean, if these property owners really wanted to just sort of maximize the potential economic returns to themselves, they obviously would have a lot of options to, you know, to profit from this, this property financially, but their willingness to essentially donate the vast majority of their, their value to the public in perpetuity to preserve this property is just a tremendous gift. So it's, it's an excellent investment for, for just a little over $500 per acre. You know, we are preserving a really valuable piece of Buncombe County, so it's really exciting. So a great, a great day for conservation efforts in Buncombe County.
If I could add one more thank you in there, and that is to you, Chairman Gant, because that, this whole land conservation approach, I think began with your, you know, stubbornness and vision. And so, and it really, I think everybody now sees the vision and believes in it, and we've, we are the better for it. So I just appreciate you all those years again, kind of standing firm and making it, making it start and making it happen, and here we sit today with this beautiful property and this great opportunity, so thank you for that.
Yeah, I also want to make a comment. This is, this is in my backyard, pretty close, and it's, it's just beautiful property, and to, to have the opportunity to protect this for children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren is a big, is a big deal. It is a... It is a beautiful piece of property. Upper Hominy is a gorgeous place to come and hang out and visit, and this is an area that doesn't need to be tore all to pieces. What a great sacrifice from these people. I appreciate it.
I'm probably on opposite side of the stick. Right now, we've just had to go up on the county taxpayers' far as money and under taxes, and I can't see the county putting money into anything at the present time until we figure out what we do with AB Tech, two city schools, and one county school as far as debt. I would assume the shell of this, because it actually shows here that they do have it on the market for sale. It hasn't went anywhere. But the $69,000, I can't go with that at the present time. I understand, David, where you're at, but I hope you understand where I'm at as far as the picture. So that's where I'm at in this issue.
Dr. Green, just for clarification, is it still the case that the county...
The county's debt compared to what we own, it's the analogy of a $200,000 house with a $60,000 mortgage?
It is, yes. Donna checked that for us earlier.
So $200,000 house, and we have a $60,000 mortgage. So I think we are safe to preserve land for years to come.
Are any other discussion? I think I'll take Mr., Commissioner Newman's fine message as a motion, and Vice Chair Jones' kind words as a second. Is there any other discussion? I'll just say this, folks, I'm sorry to talk so much about it, but this, this is one of the things we do that's, it's timeless. And we're doing things looking way, way beyond the, today. We just opened a courthouse the first time in 85 years, yes, last week. We went to, we've gone to GE and cut dun shovels of jobs that'll be here after our children and grandchildren are, are working. And I think sometimes you just got to look beyond today. You got to invest in the future. And I think there's nothing better than investing in a, when an owner's willing to put up 82% of the value, and, and we get all these benefits. I just hope this board will, will join us in voting to, to take advantage of the situation and to embrace that we do have something more important than today to look at. Mr. Chairman? Mr. King?
I'd like to also note that, that since this can be viewed from the Parkway, and the Parkway is part of our tourism base in Buncombe County, and just like to note that, you know, tourism brings in $1.5 billion a year to this area. So this is, the Parkway's quite important to us.
Well, and I just, we just met earlier, I think Commissioner King was there, we met with new superintendent, which we'll hear from at some point in the future. And there have been studies on the Parkway, that parts of the Virginia Parkway, nobody goes to. The reason? They had no rules, and they developed it all. You look out on the overlook, and you see roofs. That's all you see, and nobody goes there. And for the 75th anniversary, the Parkway studied and found that if we just keep what we have in North Carolina, people will come to Parkway. For Virginia, they pretty much said it's kind of too late for a lot of places in Virginia because they've already developed it. So I think we have to take particular sensitivity when something is near the Parkway and when it is such a prominent view. Because it is about tourism, it is about our heritage, it is about the future. And we can't undevelop once we develop these things. Any other comments? Now, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the easement of $69,300, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
The motion is, the motion carries six to one. Friar against. Thank you. Next, we have, do we have a closed session tonight?
No, sir.
No closed session. We have openings on the County Board of Adjustment. We have two vacancies. Asheville Planning and Zoning, one vacancy. Pack Place Board, one vacancy. I'd like to recognize our registered deeds. Drew Reisinger is here with us tonight. Always good to see you, and appreciate your good work in the registered deeds office. Announcements, the next meeting of our board will be November 3, beginning at 4:30 in room 326 at 200 College Street in downtown Asheville. County offices will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday on Thursday, November 28 and 29. And commission meetings can be seen on BCTV Charter Cable, channel 192, ATT U-verse, channel 99, and live on BCTV, channel 192, and on buncombecounty.org during the meetings, or online anytime at buncombecounty.org. Is there any other business coming forward? Mr. Chairman?
Would you, on behalf of the board, elaborate on the good news from last week, the ribbon cutting at GE and our staff, who played a big part in that, as well as the board?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Also, we need to pass the consent agenda.
We did that already.
Okay. Thank you.
We, we've already passed consent agenda, and Commissioner King and most of the other commissioners that were available were at the GE opening. Basically, we have a plant that is going to make a new material. It's a composite that makes the planes lighter. And what was the number it saved per plane?
Million dollars.
A million dollars per plane in gas savings, fuel savings over a year. So we tend to think this is going to be an industry that will be embraced by the airplane, and really a lot of other applications, but airplanes at least at first. And we're going to make it here. We beat out the people that invented it in Delaware, and they chose to come here. When we saved the 300 jobs in Buncombe County, we also saved 700 other jobs across the state of North Carolina. And I'd like to recognize John and Wanda, who kind of made the deal work by having the political, or actually the guts to knock on the door, next door, when the, when the site that GE was at didn't work out. Wanda Green and John Creighton knocked on the next door for Old Dominion Trucking and said, would you sell your place? Do you mind selling what, what you have here, out of the blue? And to Old Dominion's eternal credit, they said, yes, it'll help the county out. And so we basically built them a facility elsewhere, across from Lenimar, and we swapped with them on the property. And GE's going in there. It was a wonderful ceremony. Governor McCrory was here. There were a lot of representatives of the state government. It was a great day for North Carolina, in particular Buncombe County. And thanks to John and Wanda for not giving up when things went wrong with the site that we were on. It just didn't work out. When we found out what they needed, we couldn't make it work for a lot of reasons. And by having some ingenuity to think, well, we'll go to Plan B and doing it, we were able to save a lot of jobs, high-paying jobs in North Carolina and Buncombe County in particular. So it was a great day. They opened a new courthouse. Hope everybody has a chance to go see that. Maybe not for bad reasons, but maybe for good reasons. Some people may never leave the courthouse, or at least for a couple extended visits. So, any other business?
I have a question, Chairman Gant. Yeah, are we having two meetings in December, or are we thinking about only having the first one?
Well, that would be a board decision. We normally, we traditionally do not have the second meeting in December. We have, I think since I've been on the board, we have elected not to have the, the third Tuesday, and we can decide that tonight. I think if there is an emergency, we can always call a special meeting, but if the board wants to tentatively decide to cancel that third meeting, that would be the tradition we've normally done. I'll see...
It's, it's fine with me. So, would we need to vote to do that? Is it on the schedule now? We need to vote to take it off? Or what's the procedure for that? Or we just...
I think we just announced that we don't have. Is that right? New attorney do...
You can't vote.
Okay.
Because you, you know, you are required to have certain kinds of...
Okay.
I'll second Brownie's motion.
There's a motion by Commissioner Newman to eliminate the third meeting, or the second meeting, third Tuesday of December, scheduled meeting, unless there's a need for a special meeting that can be called separately. There's a second by Commissioner King. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And since we had a 7-0 vote, I'll assume that was good to put on the agenda. I guess I should have asked that first. So, we're good. Is there a motion adjourned?
Tim, second.
Motion by Commissioner France, second by Vice Chair Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. 7-0, we're adjourned. Thank you.
I haven't said why I want to. I want to keep on going.